Good evening, everyone. I am calling the St. Louis County Council Meeting to Order Tuesday, June 1, 2021. It is now time for you to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, which stands one nation, the God, their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You call the roll?
Councilmember Fitch.
President.
Here.
President.
Thank you very much. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for your patience while we tried with in-person meetings. We are here finally, and we are very, very glad to have you with us this evening. We have made accommodations here. One of these is the ADA accommodations, which we really need to ensure that happen. And it took lots of work and lots of time to bring the technology up to where it should be in order for us to have these meetings. So I want to thank Diane and her staff. I want to thank IT Public Works and I think it's CTI for making this happen. It was a tremendous effort. And Councilman Harder and I were, and we wanted to make sure that we did, as you have asked us through the various meetings that you've had, public comments. You wanted us to return, and so here we are. So we thank you and we hate that. So with that, I need a motion for the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of May 25, 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you. The Journal of May 25, 2021 is approved. Now let me also say here that with technology, there may be a few glitches here and there. So just kind of be patient with us. We have all of our IT staff here. So if something goes wrong, somebody can fix it. All right? Moving on to bid openings.
Madam Chair, we have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications. Communications, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. On zoning matters, item number one.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Moving to other communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and that will be order.
Item number two, 5th District.
Receive, file.
So ordered.
Item number three, 6th District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number five, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number six, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number seven, 7th District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Ethics Committee.
So ordered.
Item number eight.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to item number 13, and that will be the order.
One moment, Madam Chair. Item number 14, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 16.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. We are now to our public forum session of the meeting. When I call, I will be calling your names this evening. You will proceed to the podium there. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes, as with the other meetings. There'll be a timer on the stand where you can gauge your minutes. Please give us your first and last name and the ZIP code for record. So with that, the first person is Ed Golderman.
Members of the council and county executive page, my name is Ed Golderman. I live in Kirkwood, 63122. I'm on vacation. I've been working 36 years to guard, protect, advance, kill opera, ass, and muni. The greatest draws that this city has ever had, greatest combo that this city has ever had. I want to bring with you three great stories. 104 years ago tonight and this week, my grandfather and his grand opera team delivered a million-dollar week for the city of St. Louis, 1917. At the same time, the ad clubs of the world were meeting downtown. They delivered a million-dollar week for the city of St. Louis, 1917. Not bad. I don't know about the Ad Club Convention, but there were no tax dollars sought. No tax dollars sought nor requested for the building and opening of the muni. May I leave this with you for your inspection and study at some point in time? Before that, the Coliseum was built with no public money. My grandfather raised private money. The Coliseum began delivering million-dollar months as early as 10. And the third, I would like to say, St. Louis franchise. The other three comments I have is that in 2005, I presented what I think was the least cause to stopping county property owners for the zoo and the museums. In 2012, I came back with a stack of stuff that was either reasonable cause or evidence, I'm not a lawyer, saying that they don't need our money. They'd grown the zoo and the museums into day-night money-making machines. They also, growing this power, have killed the muni. Has county tax money been used to help kill the muni directly or indirectly? May I leave this with you and my comments? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Who, uh, thank you, young man. I like your tone. Thank you.
The next speaker is Azora Liggins.
I've been trying to get before this council for a while, and I want to thank Councilman Hardy and Councilwoman Davis for making this happen. My name is Azora Liggins. Good evening to all. I'm happy to be back in person to see all doing well. For years, myself come before this council seeking enforcement of God-given rights, yet we continue to suffer in silence. The last time I spoke before this council, I spoke on racism. And racism will be my topic this evening. I'm an African-American female taxpayer and a St. Louis County resident. I'm a victim of racism, and I am an advocate against it. St. Louis County has acknowledged systemic racism as a healthcare crisis, yet racism still is commonplace. I know firsthand the devastation of racism and how it impacts the health and well-being of African-American families and their community. I also know of protection. How do I know? I know of my own experiences and the experiences I've shared from others. The racism problem here in the county has not been, since 2014, I have witnessed racism. Complaints brought here by the county executives, county members, county courts, county police, county prosecuting attorney office, unions, and corporations have also been complained about. This council has been silent. Silent sanctions abusive behavior. The economic fallout from both racism and the pandemic has made for more injustice. African-American residents cannot continue to pay taxes to support the salaries of county employees who infringe upon our God-given rights. After all, we are only human. Racism is a crisis, and it deserves your undivided attention. I request for myself and all similarly situated that racism is placed on the weekly agenda and given the attention necessary to bring this crisis under control. Now is the time to act. A creation of a task force and keeping the county taxpayers informed of the progress of the progress would be an excellent place to start. Without enforcement of basic God-given rights, we can have everything and still have nothing. That is what slavery really looks like. As defenders of the Constitution, I say to this governing body, fairness and God-given rights, and hope everyone account for their illegal actions. Taking these baby steps will begin to create the change.
Thank you. Amanda Garavalia.
Hi, my name is Amanda Garavalia. I live in 63125. I come tonight because it's actually good to see some of you guys. I really appreciate what a few of you are doing for us. Glad to finally be here in person. It's unfortunate that Sam Page couldn't find the time to see his constituents in person. It's quite a shame. I guess she may be afraid, I don't know. But some of us are actually facing real-world problems. Recently, I lost my father. And because of some of our ridiculous, I'm going to get through this without crying, because of some of our ridiculous actions that we have to go through, or whatever you want to call them right now, because my words are going to go crazy, we were not allowed in the hospital while my father was dying at Mercy, which is his wife's hospital, if I remember correctly, Mercy South. We're not allowed in while he's dying, actively dying. Couldn't get one last hug, one last kiss, nothing. But after my dad died, I got to go in and see his body. Hug a dead body. To hug your dead dad's body. We're all vaccinated. We got vaccinated. Couldn't go in there to say goodbye. But after he died, oh, 20 of you can go in there at one time. Wow. The man was already dying. We weren't going to give him COVID if his mask worked so darn well and we're vaccinated. What could go wrong? He was already dying, and nobody, not even his wife, got to say goodbye. So I am here tonight to say, these restrictions have caused more pain on anybody and everybody in this county, except for maybe you and Sam Page. You too, I feel a little bad for you, Drakis. You do get a little bit of ad press sometimes. You're starting to try to help Afton out a little bit, I can see it. But in the end, I think it's time our county opens back up completely. Try to start to work together, that can happen if others give respect, because you can earn respect by giving respect. But we can't until you respect us. Thank you.
Jason Moore.
Jason Moore, 63021. First, I'd like to wish best wishes for Councilwoman Clancy for the upcoming birth of your child. God bless you. I'm here, A to talk to an empty seat up here. I see you up here on the screen. It really is disappointment that you didn't show up tonight for the first night that we actually were able to talk to one another. And I'm very happy to see all your happy faces up here, now that we're, you know, getting past all the craziness of 2020 and the part of 21. This is my daughter. She put together a stand-in prom for tonight at a place down in Jefferson County, because their prom was not going to really happen at Marquette High School to the way that the kids really wanted to have it happen, where they could just have fun, be together, hug one another, the whole yard. So they did the next best thing and all got together and planned something else. On Thursday night, she will be graduating high school and off to the next life for her. And she'll be up at the Power Plex. And I've been trying to figure out exactly what I wanted to say tonight, other than there's going to be some empty seats at some of these high school graduations where some kids did not survive 2020 and 2021 due to, I cannot tell, the conversations I've had with parents and schoolmates, and how devastating this year has been for our kids of all ages. I understand that the health crisis amongst state hospitals, local hospitals, has reached a crescendo over the last year. These kids will never be the same. We can brag and tell our kids in growing up, we could have, we walked both ways uphill in five feet of snow. Our kids are going to tell their kids, I didn't have a school, I was at home. What do we, how are they going to tell their kids when their kids complain that they've had just cut off full-time 20s from now? Heck, our own kids, we won't know exactly if they really are for another 5, 10, 20, 30 years. They've been robbed of a full year of development, of education. They will never get this back. Dr. Page, you really should have been here tonight. There's no excuse for you not to be here and stand up and at least listen to us face-to-face. I would have shook your hand as a citizen, and thank you for your service, but can't do that. So, but again, thank you, everybody, and it's great to see you guys here in person for once. Thanks again. Take care.
Tom Sullivan.
$1.4 billion in telephone, two telephone and internet providers, and wire prices dating back seven years were discovered. The department is posting hearsay. County are supposedly discussing an agreement for the county to take. Comes after jail director Doug Burris previously said, the county does not have the ability to take anymore. But now it seems county executive Sam Page wants to help out his good friend, Mayor Tashara Jones. The mayor painted herself into a political corner with her promise to close the workhouse, and now wants the county to help bail her out, in the name of regional cooperation, of course. Regional cooperation usually means county will be picking up the tab. For a bunch of warehouses, a few armaments have been added. As I have said, this has been handled poorly. There were only two proposals received, and one was withdrawn. The latest one supposedly is to add some retail, and the developer says they will have to partner with someone in order to attract retailers. The partnership needs to go back.
Kelly McGowan.
I'm Kelly McGowan, and my ZIP code is 63108. Good evening. I'm speaking as a health equity advocate and the director of Built Environment Advocacy for the entity Evolve, which is an acronym for Elevating Voices of Leaders Vying for Equity. In this role, I work alongside the community, making sure they are included in the processes that shape how their communities are designed. Last, this was later, body pass resolutions declaring racism a public health crisis and supporting equitable policies that prioritize the health of all people, especially African-Americans. This is a great step in the right direction, but how am I to explain this completely makes sense in passing? One issue for North residents is the oversaturation of outlets with off-premise alcohol consumption. We have done our homework, and have been that the best practice in improving this issue is restricting alcohol outlet density of these establishments. In essence, this practice would ensure that liquor and convenience stores do not cluster in communities. Research has shown that doing so is associated with positive outcomes for neighborhoods, including decreases in crime. I would like to make it clear that Evolve is not advocating for all establishments that sell alcohol to close. Our concern is with the over-concentration of establishments where patrons consume alcohol away from where they purchased it. The fact that there is no monitoring mechanism in place to ensure these businesses do not cluster in communities is beyond problematic, and this needs to change. I would like to thank Countywoman Webb for her willingness to work with Evolve in this important matter. However, it is impairing those council ensures off-premise alcohol outlet density is monitored and taken consideration prior to the issuing of new liquor licenses. This is because the overabundance of these detrimental businesses in North County is hampering its potential to thrive, which is a racial equity issue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and hope we can collaborate to address this important matter.
Josh Share.
Yesterday was Memorial Day, a little different than in the past. Thank all of those who have the ultimate hope that may live in a free society. But I ask myself, are we living in a free society? Can we make our own health decisions? Do we still have personal responsibility? Are we free to earn a living, government for using and not open their doors? I think many of us have lost sight of what so many have fought and lost their lives to protect. It breaks my heart to see some people completely turn their lives upside down just because the CDC comes out with a nuisance or because Sam Page says so, any proof or justification. I am asking you things tonight. First is a focus on getting our kids back to normal. By far, the sixth aspect of 20, and continuing to this day, is the treatment of our children. The fact that getting our kids back to normal life immediately is not our number-one priority speaks volumes about how much our civilization has lost its moral compass. There is without a doubt, 100% fact that these pose no harm to themselves or anyone around them. I am not, I am telling, Don, the Department of Health to make recommendations and social distancing procedures in our schools. I realize the schools can make their own decisions, but since we have given up personal responsibility, the schools will not make that decision until the Department of Health removes their recommendations. The second thing I'm asking for tonight is the resignation of Sam Page. I use that term very loosely. Forced people to wear masks, forced businesses to close, many of which permanently went out of business. He mandated stay-at-home orders and spent $1.7 million on a morgue in Earth City without any evidence or justification. People not only lost their livelihoods, but years were the memories and time spent with loved ones. Not because of a virus with a 99.96% survival rate, but from the direct actions of Sam Page. These are not the of leaders, but of dictators and tyrants. And for Sam Page, I am completely denying it. Will you resign tonight? Thank you.
And our last speaker, Anthony Caruso.
We got a situation on Madder's Road where my neighbors sat out one morning for 15 minutes and counted over 300 cars going down Madder's Road one way. I talked to the county police. They don't want to do that. I called, heard me traffic, and he never did get back to me. It's all I can say.
Moving on to the report of the county executive.
I hope everyone had a good Memorial Day weekend. On May 12, the Missouri Legislature passed Senate Bill 63, establishing a statewide prescription drug monitoring program. If signed by Governor Parson, Missouri will join 49 other states with similar programs. The St. Louis County PDMP will continue to operate until a statewide program is available for use by all healthcare providers. The focus of the St. Louis County PDMP is to provide physicians and pharmacists with information that will improve patient care, prevent potential substance use disorders or overdoses, and provide options for those who may already be struggling with substance use disorders. The St. Louis County PDMP launched in April of 2017 in the absence of a statewide program. Since then, we have expanded our program to cover 85% of the Missouri population and 94% of healthcare providers. County officials have worked diligently to maintain a program that meets the needs of both healthcare providers and patients during the ongoing opioid crisis. The Department of Public Health is confident we will be able to hand over a robust and effective program to the state. Until further announcements are made, healthcare providers should continue to utilize the St. Louis County PDMP as part of patient care. Over the last month, more than 18,000 St. Louis County PDMP users have performed an average of 11,100 patient searches per day and are connected to 17 other states for interstate data sharing. The St. Louis County PDMP is modeled from evidence-based best practices and prioritizes the priority. the privacy and security of patients. To learn more about St. Louis County's PDMP, visit stlovecod.com/pdmp. Last week, I sent to council members a request to officially receive nearly $193 million in federal funds under the American Rescue Plan Act. These funds present a once-in-a-generation opportunity to invest in our community while addressing priorities from the COVID-19 pandemic. Since ARPA was passed, I've met with each of you at least once to discuss the priorities St. Louis County should pursue with these funds. Along with my letter, I included an updated FAQ from the federal government to help with spending guidelines. The updated information contains important new developments such as authorizing vaccine incentive programs, something that was not expected to be an approved expense initially. I continue to hope the council will appropriate the funds in a manner that allows St. Louis County to continue making important investments to address the public health, humanitarian, and economic crisis resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. And I strongly encourage there be a special emphasis on spending those funds to address the needs of vulnerable and underserved populations, including African-American communities and people with chronic medical problems who have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. And I appreciate you taking the necessary legislative action so that we can continue helping those who need it the most. Before I close, a couple of notes of gratitude. I'd like to congratulate Dory Covalt, the supervisor for the planning department, on her 40 years with St. Louis County. Dory will be highlighted this week in our employee spotlight on the county's social media pages. This new feature has proven popular and is a great way to call attention to the great work of our employees. Dory's supervisor said she is an unsung hero of the planning department with deep knowledge and a can-do attitude. She, along with her colleagues, work hard to cut out the red tape and get the information to our residents and businesses in an efficient manner. Thanks, Dory, for your contributions to St. Louis County. And finally, thank you to the St. Louis County Parks Department for installing pride flags at Memorial Plaza. It's critical that our LGBTQ+ residents are seen, heard, and honored for their contributions and that we stand with them in their continued fight for equality. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to introduction of bills. And before we do that, let me, I neglected to give the voting order this evening. Fitch, Clancy, Dunaway, Tracus, Harder, Days, and Webb is the order that we will be proceeding with this evening. Introduction of bills.
Proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill number 150, introduced by Councilmember Webb. An ordinance providing for the vacation of a 50-feet-wide right-of-way breezy point lane located north of Dunn Road in the northwest quadrant of Interstate 2 Star Boulevard, Missouri Highway 367 interchange petitioner, St. Louis County. Bill number 151, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An ordinance providing for the vacation of the utility easement on Lot 1 of Forest Dale Estates, Founders Platte, located at 6923 South London Boulevard, St. L L C. Bill number 152, introduced by Councilman Days. An ordinance amending and setting apart the sum of $2,945,745 from the unappropriated balance of the park maintenance fund in support of various capital expenditures. Bill number 153, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute O.T. Incorporated for Professional Design Services to conduct an ADA accessibility assessment of the County Council Assembly Chamber, S L C P W number 21-06-OC. Bill number 154, introduced by Councilmember Harder. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant two easements to Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District for installation of a new sanitary sewer line to serve property near Spirit of St. Louis Airport. Bill number 155, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with P P M dash slash Keller Plaza LLC for lease of space in Keller Plaza, including the building at 4544, 4546, 4548, 4554, 4556, 4558, 560, 4562, and 4568 LeMay Ferry Road for use and occupancy as a satellite office by various departments of St. Louis County Government. Bill number 156, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance amending Title 1, S L C R O 1974 as amended purchasing by repealing and reenacting for 7.146. Amending Chapter 201, Title 2, S L C R O 1974 as amended personnel general by enacting and adding one new section to be known as Section 201.270. Amending Chapter 202, Title 2, S L C R O 1974 as amended personnel classified service by repealing and reenacting Section 202.270. Amending Chapter 502, Title 5, S L C R O 1974 as amended leviation collection of taxes by repealing and reenacting Sections 502.470 and 502.472. Amending Chapter 600, Title S L C R 174 as amended, Department of Public Health by enacting and adding one new section to be known as Section 600.080. Amendment 630, Title 6, S L C R O 1974 as amended, Department of Human Services by enacting and adding one new section to be known as Section 630.015. Amending Chapter 747, S L C R O 1974. Commission on Human Reenacting Section 714.030. Amending Chapter 717, Title 7, S L C R O 1974 as amended, Fair Housing Code by repealing and reenacting Sections 717.010, 717.020, 717.030, 717.040, 717.050, and 706. Amending Chapter 718, Title 7, S L C R O 1974 as amended, the Public Accommodations Code by repealing and reenacting Sections 718.020. Amending Chapter 722, Title 7, S L C R O 1974 as amended, Human Relations Related Petty Offenses Code by repealing and reenacting Sections 722.040 and 722.0. Amending Chapter 1111, Title 1974 as amended, Sewer Lateral Repair Program by repealing and reenacting Sections 111.020 and 1.070. And amending Chapter 1112, Title 12, S L C R O 1974 as amended, Water Service Line Repair Program by repealing and reenacting Section 1112.070 pertaining to nondiscrimination provisions in gender-neutral language. Madam Chair, that is all the bills this evening.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next. Bill number 150, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill 266 is held.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill 267 is held.
Bill number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Move to hold Bill number 75, please.
Bill number 75 is held.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold substitute bill number 1 for bill number 77.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 77 is held.
Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, please read the substitute.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance amending Chapter 714, Title 7, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Commission on Human Relations by repealing and reenacting Sections 714.010 and 10.020.
Yes, I have been working with the Human Relations Commission Chair Karen Resty and her members on this bill, as is Bill 88. It increases the membership of the commission from nine members to 11 members, which will help them include more diversity onto their commission and also updates the language of the commission to reflect more. What this bill does actually is it adds the Crown Act language, which was recently passed by this council and led by Councilwomen Days and Webb, and other items to be consistent with the bill that I introduced this evening, Bill number 156. So tonight, I'd like to adopt this substitute bill and then hold it on the order of business. So I move to adopt substitute bill number 1 for bill number 88.
Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 88, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 88 is adopted.
Thank you. And I move to hold substitute bill number 1 for bill number 88 on the perfection order of business.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 88 is held.
Moving on to bill number 131, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Please read the substitute.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 131, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance amending Title 6, Chapter 630, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Department of Human Services by repealing and reenacting Sections 630.050 and 630.060 and amending Title 2, Chapter 201, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Personnel General by repealing and reenacting Section 201.200 pertaining to establishment of a youth advisory council.
Thank you. I have been in with Councilmembers Fitch and Councilmember Harder about this bill. Both of them had some suggestions to approve this, to improve this bill, one of which is reflected in the substitute bill tonight, which actually changes the pay of commission members to be more consistent with the stipend of other board and commission members. So with that, I would like to adopt the substitute bill tonight and then I will hold it on the order of business. So I move to adopt substitute bill number 1 for bill number 131.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 131 is perfected.
And with that, I move to hold substitute bill number 1 for bill number 131 on the perfection order of business.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 131 is held.
Bill number 39, introduced by Councilmember Days.
This legislation requesting a $2 increase for employees of the Justice Services Center. And I am holding this legislation and I will tell you why. Number one, employees in St. Louis County just received an increase in pay. We are not aware of how we're going to be able to even sustain that, but nonetheless, we have that and we must do that. Number two, the ARPA funds are limited in hiring new personnel. We need to make sure that we are in compliance with what the federal government has requested that for us to do. Number three, this money is only for three years. And so I am curious as to how we will sustain these additional salaries that have been suggested by the department. The council, as you are aware, had a workshop where we will be looking at the priorities of this council and how we will spend the ARPA funds. This is one of those that we will be considering. However, we will do that after we receive the information from the administration as to how the first $173 million was spent. And we are in the process of getting that. We have a committee of the whole. You can check and see when that meeting will take place and then we will move expeditiously to make sure that we are in compliance, number one, with these, these funds and that we fall within the recommendations of the Treasury Department. So with that, I am holding bill number 139. Bill number 139 is held.
Bill number 143, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill 143, please.
Bill number 143 is held.
Bill number 144, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 144.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 144 is perfected.
Bill number 145, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 145. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 145 is perfected.
Bill number 146, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 14. Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 146 is perfected.
Bill number 147, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 147. Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 147 is perfected.
Bill number 148, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 148. Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 148 is perfected.
Bill number 149, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 149, please.
Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 149 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 320.
Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Move to hold substitute bill number 1 for bill number 76, please.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number 220.
Bill number 220 is held.
Bill number 142, introduced by Councilmember Days.
Move for final passage of Bill number 142. Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
Call please.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 142, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 142 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions. Do we have any resolutions this evening? Unfinished business.
Item number 1.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number 2, 7th District.
Hold on the order of business.
Item number 3, the order of business, that will be the order.
Item number 4.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number 5.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number 6.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order. Will we launch a new business?
Madam Chair, we have two prepared orders this evening.
Order 1.
Prepared order number 1 in the communication from Gray Tatar, Director of Procurement, and Todd A. of Procurement, and Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for adoption of Order Number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please aye.
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 Aye. Order Number...
In the matter of communication from the Honorable Sam Page County Executive, requesting authorization of two change orders to an existing contract with Pace Construction for the Oklahoma Boulevard Resurfacing Program Project, I'm sorry, AR-1552.
Move for adoption of Order Number 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Order Number 2 is adopted. Any other comments for the good of the council, good for the county at this time? Number 2, I make a statement, I think I would be very remiss if I did not make a comment about the 100-year anniversary of the worst race massacre in the history of this country. Tulsa, Oklahoma was a mecca for black people and the ingenuity and hard work that went into building a legacy for our people. The hatred and jealousy that launched that movement has not gone away. It has morphed into a system that has devalued people, denied quality education, erased away most of the economic and cultural power that we had. Pull yourselves up by your bootstraps. We had boots, and we had straps, and we had other nice things, but someone cut our straps and burned our boots. I call on all of us to examine our sensitivities and prejudices regarding racism. We're not asking for platitudes, genuine, non-defensive, educated conversation as to how can move St. Louis County place abide for all of us. Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.